So, let me read the, uh, page by the board president. And before this is provisioned for the open public record, public meetings at NJSA, in colon four six, deal nineteen seventy five, C two three one, S one, committed to old, two thousand and six, C seventy, S two. That's where the court of justice, the state, the trial, had a notice, proceeding by sending a notice, time and date of location, and extended known, intended to be that the court press, you post her, on that third part of twenty twenty five. So obviously, the note has also been placed in the district building, building boards, district schools, and the third parking school building, after the park, these parking, office, and clerk, April eleventh, twenty twenty five. That's the park school district provide also to the comprehensive professor, head stage, where everyone for the field characters to speed, the diverse and broadly, global side.
The floor.
Here.
The billows.
Here.
The flagrant.
Here.
The presenting.
After the end.
Here.
The break.
Here.
The last one.
Here.
The one.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna let, uh, the principals, uh, take care of it. I'll be along with you. Uh, we have kids here in large workshops, uh, rather than on, so this is the agenda, just like I mean to accommodate our people, in families that are here. Okay, uh, we're gonna, gonna go on with the, uh, regular schedules. Uh, so we have find a presentation by the side. And also just to let everyone know, uh, our regular channel net, channel, was just broken prior, so we're, our local community network to take this. But, uh, sorry.
Assistant. Good evening. Sorry, I have to eat behind the laptop. So today we're gonna present the final budget. So a budget. Second personal budget. The whole personal budget. Budget consists of planned expenses and expected revenues. A budget is also an organizational plan, stated demands. And the school budget is the final expression of a district's educational need and priorities. What's a hard budget? To fully operate our district, sixty-three million dollars. Sixty-three, seven thirty, three eight. Rains and entitlements. It's an additional fourteen million, five hundred and twelve, seventy-four dollars. Our district hang out with the local community then. This year our goal, as I stated in the tentative, uh, budget, Aaron, we wanna make sure that we keep our staff, to maintain appropriate rights out. As we all know, for a former African school districts, we cannot go in countries our presence is like, some of our name going down. So we wanna make sure that our students, you know, get out of teaching, you know, with not small classrooms, but can't have thirty kids like those we may have. We also wanna comply with state mandate. Our continued investment in facility and several properties, which were here at the last board meeting, they're being the cell, buildings that children are not using sign, so we don't wanna touch our own buildings. We wanna make sure with all the regional summers, we wanna reach, we consider to provide a thorough education in this network. As we all know, over the last ten years, we have lost state agents. The state uses the business. We started in twenty sixteen with fifty-five million dollars, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, so that's the first number. This year, they're expecting to give us seventeen million dollars. That's a big jump. Our next slide will show us, the African cash money and the actual local actor. So, twenty sixteen, the local fair share was sixteen million, and the actual full tax was six million. This year the state wants to be at journey eight coming out, ten up, blue, five, one, all the way up. And the tax incentive, which is only our twenty-eight million dollars.
Do you have any kind of surveillance? If you leave her behind, there's no one else.
Our budget is not rated. See increases in ability and healthcare costs. They went up, they cleaned up, cleaned up twenty percent, they're great, or, or others. Terms of tuition, we all know that at least fourteen million dollars are profitable. Special education cost is unpredictable, but it still has to be. Our government, our government. And contractual salary increase. There's a negotiating right now, so that's, we're still negotiating, we're still trying to come. We're gonna need right now, it's been on hold, but we have to let it happen, well. This year we have to put seventy-five percent that we're expecting from federal funds, and the tax is maybe to be eighty-eighty-five. So we all know that because of what's on the station, a lot of things to be done, a lot of things to work on as well, but. And preschool summer course, I don't know if you guys may know, but in the past, preschool budget was paid for their children to come to our summer school program. This year, well, twenty-five, twenty-six, the district hasn't paid for, fifth half of our summer schools of preschool, and we wanna do that because we don't wanna lose our kids at a day there, or our charter because they offer free preschool. So we wanna keep ourselves here. This year is the tax incentive, tax letting incentive. As of right now, we have nothing to prove for this day. You're expecting sometime next week. So if we increase our tax funding to where we're supposed to be, they'll give us an incentive of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Again, like I said, we need sixty-three million, seven thirty, eight thirty, according to. Forty. Forty-five percent of that is salary. Forty-nine percent, I'm sorry. And you got benefits to the right. Look at that big chunk of profit portion. And our district says five percent. But this year, you know, with the implementation of a new program, we're making a lot of students in house. And you feel needs again, like I said, went up twenty percent. And the little enough towards other than that, what our exit students, supplies, this will not go away. Our board president. We want to make sure we're ready for jobs at exit work there. Resignation, their requirements are not going to place. Our in-house ERI program, we will rest the rest of residents to this. Are making the reserves of required maintenance facilities and have to preserve time that pays. We are so exploring for resources, sources of residence, and our reputation taking this baseball now. So your tax rate now, the average median price, average price of the gas here is about six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three. So your tax rate for a hundred thousand would be eight dollars a month. So it's open for any questions or comments.
Anyone would like to speak, uh, ask any question, both person forward. I, yeah, no, they just saying that we are patient. Go back to slide, yeah. Then here on the stand, all the tax implications. I understand this slide, paying eight dollars a month. For, uh, for one of them, the smaller dividends I saw sent you in two years. Correct? So, but, instead of having that request that of an email, was when the tax levy is going to be thirty-two million, twenty-five cents. And the final budget is showing the tax levy at thirty-eight.
Eighty-seven hundred and fifty-five million dollars?
Right, eighty dollars per month for two years, based on a tax levy that's about five or six million, well, on the tax levy. You see that? Well, let's, let's do it this way, eighty dollars per month is based upon what tax levy?
Tax levy, this is a threshold, fifty percent. Yes, you're right, me too.
Eighteen hundred dollars.
Your school budget on fiscal year, your local tax on calendar year. So your calendar year two thousand and twenty-five taxes, over six months, of the twenty-four, twenty-five, two liter tax, in six months, twenty-five, twenty-six liter tax. And the tax relation, suddenly for a, thankfully, there's no. They're not, it's a tax mistake. So that's what it says, thirty-eight million. The moment. It's thirty-two million this year. And then it's thirty-two million, that's. Right, I, I get that, but I just think for person, um, simplicity, those who are very, you get a, a total number. And based on where you are, reducing total numbers in different, the state comes in and says your total number that local residents should pay, is there a ton of just, correct? Thirty-five million is coming from your exhibit, dated February twenty-second, that you presented to the board. Some right-hand column. Local payer share, right about halfway down, thirty-five million, five hundred forty on the past. So we have the budget, it's over, but this, we have a budget, but you're paying three million more. Then you want to identify this local payer share, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are, are you aware of any other community that's doing that?
I'm aware of that, which might.
So, so you're not aware of any other community that's doing that?
Yes. I'm not aware of communities that are not doing this.
Oh, we're gonna go to that.
Need to spend money to have a certain position, right?
This is chapter because our local payer share and advocacy number two different numbers we take. So we are going above the local payer share to actively, which is what we're taking, allowing districts to do. And these from the news articles I've seen, it does seem like a number of districts are taking that option this year to raise their taxes, to be actively, correct?
But they're not raising the living room dollars.
Um, I mean, not every district, I'm trying to connect, districts are in fact looking to raise it more than.
More than, more than that.
Problem here is the budget that we're looking at, but it has not been identified in the text. The budget being presented, uh, toward tonight, is intended, are getting low-dollar tax levy, for a ten no-dollar increase, already anticipated, that has single cut. There, there's no cuts, and also, you're feeling the call, whole preview of the sale. Yeah, so, if we don't know, just need, there's nothing to cut. Not sell, turn, and you did, the district would not receive a penalty, as the state, or in a HBS, getting open. So that's part of where this ten million dollars would come from. The problem I have is that even though she was cutting twenty-seven decisions, it cuts, even though they're raising, they've been cutting, raising.
And Sammy, you've discussed many times, and we've discussed even more, uh, financial reasons for dominant, for you and on, we have been presented by the interim superintendent, the state honor, the middle school principal, and the high school principal, that due to also being significant cuts that this district has made over the past year, that we are, this district is steadily operating on a stepped step. And the. Why is there a current spending and state funds that should be cut more instructional staff, we are at risk of not being able to provide the first and efficient mechanism for the students in our district who are. We've got, we're done looking to prioritize senior security staff, and those who are maybe who need minimal, definitely helping, definitely helping, looking to raise taxes. We have investigated every single option, we have met for hours and hours, over the last few months, I, as part of my committee, we've been working even more out. We have looked at the option, the only viable option, and the best interest of staff and students of this community are raising taxes.
I just like to say, I've spent another spending staff, I've heard the arguments against the fact that we can't cut the state's staff number. And unfortunately, relating another situation yet, and that's the people who live here.
Right.
I live here, these students live here, I live here, I live here, so. The other parts of the community are the people in town aren't going to be able to afford to pay the property taxes. And so when the people can't afford to pay the property taxes, they're free, and they're replaced by weekenders without children, what then happens in the community overall? So that's my question, that's what I care about. So, all I'm saying is that, I wouldn't say let's cut sixty percent of the staff in town. What I've said was, let's identify a single cut. Now, a single cut has been identified, that happens on selling the school. We cannot sell the school, and even if we did, we'd get a hundred. So that's where we stand. People, we were presented with a budget that showed ten million dollars income that we operated under to cut some of these deficits, and that doesn't exist. So that's where we are. So rather than go back to the table and say, let's look for some other cuts, that wasn't done, and that's my point. That's the problem I have with this budget, is that we're just saying automatically the ten million dollar taxes. I feel like I'm gonna figure. So, the problem is, that's the problem I have, is that we're saying the community taxpayers have to cover the hundred percent, and we haven't identified any other ways to cut any other costs in town. And the fact of the matter is, the costs in town have been going up considerably for the past three years. And so that's where people are, and I feel like we all owe it to not just the taxpayers, the community overall, when you lose your residents, you lose your community, and that's what will happen.
Hold on, let me say something. Uh, can you, hold on a second. Can you tell me what's, like, uh, that science, social studies, or, or, tell me.
If we're in the class.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not learning. Also, we have these students here. Hey, student, can you stand up? Would you like to talk to us, please? Okay, so let me play right now, keep up. Twenty-seven Sam Hurry last year, you know, working on a skeleton for, for. I hope not, constant, that is gonna affect the idea of these students, every student in this district, because it's something that we, we gotta do, and we can't. And that really important event. So, if we don't stay out, we have got math, science, social studies, English, history, and art. So, we need to put which subject we do not wanna teach in.
It's putting, it's making clear through all of this, that cutting teachers and cutting these classes will mean that a student who are here do not end up having a transfer that is valuable for them to move forward. Uh, I will try to consider the system, again, of the idea that there is nothing that we can do with perfect Marshall, we have needed with the provision of education, and presented a proposal to him, that he could go screw, he was very, very, uh, impressed with, and encouraged us to continue to pursue it, and is connecting us with different people, uh, within the state, to try to pursue it, and that is the public private partnership, which we have discussed. But first and foremost, what is reflected in this budget, and in what has been discussed in the finance committee, in what's gone in, as the basic principles. Driving this budget is for once, for once, in the last fifteen years, students come first. And. All the generations have sold these students. They're, they have given up things that belong to them. And the only way we're trying to do is create a sustainable district that children will be able to go through from a pre-pen to high school, we can attract students back, and if you look at a true tax impact of this increase, it is minimal. For majority of people in this community, it is minimal. And it's minimal, there are two, what these students are entitled to.
Issue that we're not selling buildings, we are continuing, everybody knows that, to look at, selling, making this building, uh, we still have the process. Because some of the candidates, these people, we have to rectify, but that building is on, on progress, and also our parents. These are things, if you go back a lot, shit, we're sitting in a building, we paint twenty-seven thousand dollars per hour, uh, people that have noticed in time that, and we got to the back of it. And, as they said, overtime's gotten to thirty-seven. Staff, overtime. And if we look at it, we're reacting, and what we are needing to express to the community is that we have the right size of district, but in a sense, you have to understand, everyone has to pay their fair share, governing of the debt, uh, influence will be clearly for the next group, which states and says, this is what you're supposed to mandate, it's supposed to be, and we have not done that openly much. Few years, you make excuses to the taxpayers, and right now, you know, the, the tax bill is something pretty big, and, you know, I do myself, and I'm close to increase back to the minimum. I believe the state needs to really refix this whole funding formula, we need to look at schools that need to be added, uh, adequately provided, especially at the school districts. For Black and Brown, is that we have a regard of this community, that he's saying opportunities everyone else, and let's be good, let's go to the living, let's go to the post. Our team is not getting what goes in.
True.
And sometimes I go on, when I say a person, person in the vision, I'm at so point, because I've not argued to be everything that these kids have, and it, it doesn't work, and I've always said in my life, no one said, go to the term, where's the cost, and how is that to get the people? But. I'm really proud of that, uh, I'm looking here in other, in my study, I'm only a student, you like me, when I made this commitment, for this, for these filter, and your best interest, uh, making sure that these kids be educated, and that's my thoughts, always.
Mr. President, can I make a comment? First, first I think that this last thing was, was meaning to something with spending, or demonstrating more, administration of, and, 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 something, so. I think that everybody that sat here on this, in this, our head, positions and administration, and now I think there's a lot of that, this, this, and. Uh, I think that this budget should be like your. should be like your house. You will just make us, you know, makes the company more expensive, so you make adjustments. This is we added staff to this district, I didn't know we were adding staff until I got this, yes, statistics constantly monitoring, and I thank you for sending a bunch of information that I'm sorry, and although the finance committee are sorry, or they have all the information, other of us do not. I think that there are things that can be done, and maybe stated some money, because we have to make sure this district lasts over a few years. I think about the ninety-three-year-olds out in this across state, almost ninety-one year old, or a woman that lives around the corner, people like that, and I've known from the past forty years, I've been here, those are people aren't going to be there, they're not going to be able to pay their mortgage. A lot of people wanted to stay here until they die, they won't be able to. It's going to be hard on them, I would have to cut some of it too, but some of these people are going to have to correct and raise their, their lives. Our students' families are going to have to change the way they live, and their lives will be. We could do something, and we have, I think that's just what we are responsible. I am for teachers instead, I'm for students, I must help, I thought that I know a little bit, a lot about it. This is our city, so that's very important, as a great part of voting to have these here, so that I was responsible for them, students, and our staff. This is not what I would call responsible. Now, you can yell, insult me because you don't like where I stay, but I did hear, a lot of people home, and you go to your communities, and that's okay, but we're here, and I have to see where neighbors leave, before sales signs go up, it's going to impact this city dramatically. And that's, if I care, there's something we can do, and we have not.
I just want to see the point about, you know, if this accident is being part of what 's taking the city on a portal, I think it's a very small part, we told the department something, and talked about how they continue to get more market share, yeah, we can see the median price of home jumped fifty thousand dollars in one year in the city, and that like, you know, also the word inflation, if we're, I mean, I'm going on the numbers up there, if we're talking about raising the tax rate a dollar per hundred thousand dollars, then this, you know, fifty bucks a month coming up, and the problem here, and the problem this day of the territory, and especially on how we, we create that school every single year for many other communities, and how we do not do that, and have not created that in a decade, if not four, we don't create that in our schools every single year, and we have a community like us, very hard, that has been rapidly gentrified, particularly since twenty-twenty, and every time you turn around, there's another luxury high rise in the, you know, that part. These teachers and high school websites.
They don't say it, they don't pay school taxes. They don't, yes, the, the thing is, is that, less than fifty percent of people that live here pay the taxes, they don't pay, so you're impacting a small part of our community. Other communities have a vast tax rate, tax base, you know, somebody, a large community like Congress that are raising their taxes, the impact is maybe, well, yeah, the states are doing it for this year, yeah, but the impact is less per month, that's what people don't understand. When you talk about pay or share, what's pay? The tax rate, or the amount of money each of us are responsible for. Here, we're responsible for a bigger chunk, it's a bigger impact, when you own a home, you would know that, that's not hurt. No, I'm not, it's not an insult.
Well, I'm a teacher at home.
No, I know, and you are a teacher, and you're a union president, understand your situation, you know, you, you're, you're more passionate for certain things, and I don't do, but I also have to age the people that elected, live here, families that have to, that get impacted by this. It's not going to be the person that has a five million dollar, I announced at one oh, one oh, ten oh one, uh, one thousand and one oh seven, it's not going to be the three companies, it's not going to be them, it's going to be me, it's going to be Tom Stepi, it's going to be Mr. Brazil's mom, her mom, it's going to be Amy Wills' home, it's going to be, you know, Joe's home, it's not going to be somebody who's paying a million dollars.
Barbara, um, I, I appreciate the spirited discussion, yeah, when I first, like, grabbed my chest, and I saw that there was going to be a significant increase, not, this guy's enough, you know, and doing the calculation, the average, hoping comes out to about five hundred eighty-four dollars more here, which is not this, but, hold on, wait, we're not interrupting, sorry, nobody interrupted you, nobody interrupted you, because I think the part, as, as Mary, that there are people that aren't going to be here, um, there are people that are not going to be here, not because of the taxes, one of those people is a kid who plays still, Zach, a kid who plays still, his nickname is Sheen.
That's right.
And I went to his view. He was like seeing this, with the class of my daughter. Thank you. He's not going to see this twenty-third, he's not going to be here. Why? Because he was shot in the face at fourteen AM after school, he was sitting at home, someone's already come out, and he was shot. Jersey was there, they saw the thing, not in the history, but also his classroom, too. You could tell those kids to not have the resources for infrastructure, or any support that even a deal with the trauma of the classroom, he was shot, he was. So when we're talking about tax increases, we're talking about people who may be selling their homes, and they saw some of the housing that were for sale, as you said, I don't remember if it was here or in the back, and there's a whole bunch of for sale sign, double for fourth and third, and so, yeah, some of them bought their homes in two thousand two for two hundred thousand dollars, now they're selling for one hundred thousand dollars. But I think we just, if we're looking at real, let's understand what's at stake here, visit Ocean Township, to visit Little Town Township, we have a mission where if we can't fund the resources and the teachers to our kids, it could be end life to death. So, I just want to put some perspective there, because it's not just a ninety-three-year-old with a home, it's not just me, I'm struggling with paying my taxes already, it sucks. But I'm sorry, but my eyes have been made wide, you see a kid whose face had to get reconstructed because he got shot in the face, and there aren't enough male robots to be all there for their funeral, and the mom has to volunteer to be their own sons, all there. It makes you think, and I, I'm just asking people for perspective on this, because there's a lot more at stake than a five hundred eighty-whatever-dollar tax bill increase.
That's right.
And being, you know, but, but you can't talk about one, that one time a less, uh, uh, month, you know, so, you know, there are ways that we can cut as president, because the reason why is because the town's become richer, the town has become richer, and the state has helped, well, look at all these, these, these multimillionaires in town, so, yeah, uh, of course they can afford more, and they're doing it to us, the state's doing it to us, but I'm not going to, the, the answer is not, oh my God, our kids are learning, our, our kids are dying in the streets, and we don't have resources for the kids, we don't have national school programs for the kids, let's not, it just doesn't make any sense, so, um, that's all I can say.
And, you know, it's very nice to see the Republicans on, and say, oh, that's a good point, but, I sent a finance committee, I sent an email to this entire board, asking for suggestions for the budget, asking for what, what might you cut, what might you change? I received one response, one for this entire board, so please, please, throw something that the happening cuts, and that, and that is a part of the conversation.
And I didn't pay information on the question, so, um, so.
You can answer it, what did you want us to do, without source, uh, security, maintenance, and state, uh, superintendent, said we could not source at this time.
It's not going to, it's super, it's, and the items I asked for, is all items that board members should know, and who decisions are, and that is such, for the, or, and if now students are participating, what we have, maybe in class sizes, courses, little longer, so that we have this negotiation.
Both superintendent, both the superintendent and the principals describe the reasons why those cuts could not be made, because of the staff replaced and the threat to the educational program.
I'm sorry, I, you should may have finished. Because everybody should have the data. I understand the people's decisions, but we all should have the data, so that we can make decisions with the opinion of the minister who's that we're on. Don't get the data, you can't predict what they're saying, and reduce that, but it's the board's decision, of over nine, four, or two, then make decisions on class offerings, staff, you know, the class offerings and the class sizes, yes, we're giving them these class sizes, but if you don't give the information, you can't make a decision on those, that's also this.
I thought, uh, let's, uh, we see all the things is here, they're from, when I saw this, whatever I have, we don't want a lot of this, we don't, right, we're not going to talk about, but we still, we cannot have sports on top, it's hard to find, we have many sports here, in, uh, today, but the last ones, class are
Careful. One teacher in each class. No supplemental.
Never mind, it's, it's a new point at this point. I know I'm not meant to, so.
Like you know.
Also, we submitted, uh, statement. If, uh, what, more questions now? If not, to the public, uh, people can come up, it's actually that question about, like, ladies and gentlemen, annually, the board is required to have a board hearing on the budget, right now, we're going into the board hearing on the budget, and the public now has the opportunity to comment on it, so this is the board.
Good evening, Sheila Brazil, twelve hundred Jefferson Street, which we've been at our house since nineteen eighty-four, I would talk about forty years, it's incredibly old, first was my mother, now it's my brother here, I'm attached, and on up, but I cook everything, you know, going to McDonald's, my kids might, but I don't, so you have to make do, what you have, you have to, you have to, you have to stop, go to another, but then, all this, I've been making a comparison, they say, um, in, in international, they're like, so, they would play to compete, for you to bring your hobby, you want that kind of, no, but, my thing is, we don't, we don't deserve to be here, we need, you cannot do with the sports, of what they need, I mean, you're really, you're paid to steal these sports, and I think, you know, people that say they ran for the, just because of the tax, you know, I think you didn't deserve to be here, so, I mean, really, but, no, I love you, but can't give it to sports, and this, if, um, you know, I'm, you know, I'm here, you know, I'm here, it's, you know, it's not a bad, I love you, but we have to move on, I mean, you can't give it to them, yes, I think they need to go, but, I'm trying to think of others, but, you know, you know, this, you know, you know, it, it's like, like, on, if you go buy something, it's more money, but the size is small, so, it's, it's like, ever since twenty nineteen, you, you're, I still go to the city council, and, you know, it's, 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 and, and anywhere, and, so, now, many, some, any of you, need to make out, kind of, stuff, it makes you, you know, we, 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 it's quite fun, but, I'm doing it, okay, I'm like, oh.
Well, boys. Hi, everybody, it's good to see some of you. My name is Jade Maxu, I live on four twenty-five Sunset Avenue, um, with my husband and my son, who goes to the Good Marshall, okay, um, Mr. Gerbi, oh, with Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, as a homeowner of multiple property in Ashbury Park, I'm begging you to not cut down our staff. For less than fifty dollars a month, if you can't afford it, go somewhere else, but it's, you're talking about fifty dollars, and then we're talking about our children's education, please don't give up. And I want to share an experience, a couple weeks ago, a couple weeks ago, we got a notification that, uh, we will not have after-school programs with one day notice, I was able to leave work, I looked terrible in front of my boss, but I was able to leave. Say hi. I came to pick up my child at two o'clock, there was a parent, I came with her apron, it looked like she was in the kitchen, she had to pick up her child and take her to work, to the kitchen, to wherever she had to, and she was crying, she was crying because she was assured she has her job when she goes back. For those kids, please, don't cut our staff, I am at every pickup and drop off, every one of our staff is holding a hand, every one of our custodians are doing something for us, nobody's sitting there playing, playing solitary. I am begging you to not give up. Thank you.
As we do with the therapist, we encounter, Patrick Young, that's a lot of us, um, I find the target that New York is trying to convince the world that our kids are working for, that it's such as only selling buildings, getting rid of staff, but never to cut the unnecessary expenditures, we're open, we are also willing to cut the jobs that have direct impact on our kids, you keep wanting to cut us off at the knees, but expecting us to run, you take away our teaching staff, parents, custodians, etc., but you want to see a growth in state testing. It's disrupting for years, and when I say years, through many superintendents, at least the several years I've been here, we've been talking about our teams deserve better, and that we need to fix this, but the actions never match our words. Um, our communities get gentrified, dismantled, disenfranchised, and then it's always our Black and Brown kids that get the short end of the stick. Maybe we should direct our energy to the city council members who continue to approve these thirty-year tax-free contracts to these companies and developers, which, by the way, they chose to do it. All the contracts are the ones that are actually hurting the community of Ashbury Park, so we should direct that energy to them. It's clear that they don't want our place here, and It's clear that they don't want our place here, and these guys would feel that. So I'm not willing to give up on this. I know most of us sitting here are not willing to give up on our kids, and I hope we won't too. And I'm going to leave you with this open review here, sir. Every child deserves to turn in, and don't look everything up on them. Understand the power of management and insist that they become the best that they can possibly become. You would be led to do that for our kids. And I understand the hardship with the taxes. They love the taxes right now. But at the same time, I believe you don't have a kid that goes here. How would it be a little far if you don't understand those costs that's going to take? And maybe you can afford to send your own private schools, from all, any other school where you can pay that kind of money. But how would I decide for them? These are the schools they depend on, and we were taught. So stop cutting us off at the knees. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Sollin. I reside at 1101 Van Nuys Avenue. I've been dealing with surgery for the last 35 plus years. I have two concerns and two issues. My first concern issue is the fact that at the end of the day, I'm the same as for the last 10 years. You have not lived in the board imagination, but you have the City of Ashbury Park, you have the Ashbury Park Housing Authority. At some point, those three entities need to sit at the table and start trying to figure out how that helped the way our district. I'm not talking about pointing fingers, I'm not talking about blaming one another. I'm talking about coming to the table and coming up with a solution that's going to benefit everybody at the end of the day, the school district, from the housing authority, let alone the City of Ashbury Park. The other issue I have, you know, we all have this really bad habit of always wanting to point the finger and blame each other for any mistake. But at the end of the day, the board that's sitting here tonight, you need to really start looking at each other in the face and respecting one another. That you're just doing as the next person, sitting next to you. So at the end of the day, if it's up to you guys becoming, I don't care if you're friends, but it's a matter of whether you can respect one another as individuals and humans, you're not going to be able to get anything accomplished for our children who are sitting here disrespecting one another. And so they, as they go down, these are people you need to work, you're going to get, and not let them sit at that table. Right? Because now, these staff members and these parents and these children, none of y'all will be sitting there. Thank you. Thank you. Our council officials, they're definitely Ashbury Park. I hear a board member saying that certain people are struggling in this community. Come down Third Avenue. There's a big block where I live, it's a $2.9 million house going up. $2.9 million house going up. And I bet you the people who's building that house, the taxes, they're not being taxed to our students. I'm a single mom, and I struggle every day. I work two jobs to make a living. And you sit at the table and say, "Well, this person is struggling, this person is struggling, I'm struggling too." And if you make cuts, my son, the Marby's mother, and he's been in the ERI program, and he's graduating eighth grade next month. And thanks to his young, the president, the new principal at the new school, Dr. Garbelino, Mr. Head, his village, that's his village, this Marshall, his village. Thanks to them. And you cut, they cut. This program is not, it's a good program. And my son is the face of the program. I'm the one that said enough is enough. I don't want to send him out of district, because I know you can't afford to send another kid out of district. You got his out of district, and I feel that should be back in district and be a part of this program. But please, don't make any cuts. Because if you make any cuts, I feel like this program is going to be effective. And Marby's here, but I don't know where he's at. He's here, and I want to show you the program, how much he has grown since the program has started. He is the face of the program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brittany Rambo, and I reside at 1302 Madison Avenue. I'm also an Ashbury Park alumni, as well as my husband and my children and my daughter. I beg you, please do not make the cuts. My daughter was an IUP, or cutting resources from her, we all register. We will find a way. I would not care how much we have to pay, but we want to stay here. You are telling us, "Oh, my 93-year-old friend." They can, they do. If we can, they can too. They probably have their own, maybe they are. I'm telling you who haven't, right now in the school, and siblings in the school. I see the effect of this. I went through a high school, so many programs already been cut, education affected. My brother lives in the Dream Program, and now that's ruined. They're not getting the same opportunities. You guys keep making that crap like those cuts. My daughter deserves a good education. If it's not possible, then even though, we want to stay. I don't know why you're speaking for us, but please do not. As a whole Latino here, I'm telling you, we want to stay here, because there's a lot of areas that cannot come up here. We are afraid to come up. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. We need to stop speaking for us, because you are not, I support. I told my husband, who's here in the district. We want to stay. We are, I'm here for our daughter and all the students here, my husband's students. We want them to succeed. I want my daughter to get out of here and go to college. I'll do the things that I didn't have, I need it to have. He deserves better, my daughter deserves better, all the other kids out coming, they deserve better. Please do not make the cuts. There will be other ways. If we can do it, you can do it too. Thank you.
I reside at 505 Sewell Avenue. I have a son, a preschool student, who also has an IEP. He has a IEP, a speech dialect. He has had the help of even some people sitting in this room to help him speak, to help him just do better. He has turned into a different person because of some of the people sitting in this room. You said you didn't know about staff being hired? My son, who has an IEP, was not receiving the speech therapy that he was supposed to be getting because there was no staff. They had to specifically hire people to provide the services that he should be able to have. Do not cut staff. We need them. My child thrives with the education that he is supposed to be getting. And without that, he will hurt. My son will suffer without these programs and without the staff. Please do not have them.
Hi, my name is Susan from 308 Eighth Avenue. And I just want to say three things. First of all, I don't have a child in the district, and I fully, I'm a homeowner in Ashbury Park, and I fully support raising taxes. I really want, if you can't give Mr. McCorr, his staff, and all of the principals, all of the educational initiatives going on right now, please give them a chance to, to support the kids the way they currently are. Um, and remember, look, if we were in a district where parents could pay for that extra childcare, or the $100 tutor, or, 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 maybe it would be different, or not. So we can't let our kids down. Um, and the third thing I want to say is, remember, yes, now unfortunately, the empty lot, which we wish would be a green space, is now a $2.9 million condo, $2.9 million condo. But we would be doing a service to the rest of the residents of Ashbury Park by allowing them to invest in their school district, because we all know, in the state of New Jersey and across the country, if the school districts improve, property values go up. Thank you very much.
Are there any more comments? Okay, we're closing the public portion. Uh, I still think, um, my board to state any comments in connection with both, uh, even if it's a problem.
I'll speak. Uh, my name is Eric here where I stand. I hope that the rest of the board joins me in voting to pass this budget with the tax increase that means our students are sad and our community.
I just wanted to remind the board their role of Madison and Board Education Member, because, um, I was, I reminded myself that, yes, we are elected officials, quote, quote, right? We were elected by the voters of Ashbury Park. We are, we are agents of the state of New Jersey. If you, if you go to the trainings that the School Board Association does, the first thing that they tell you is that your primary responsibility is not to the taxpayers, whether we like that or not. It is not to the voters, even, whether we like that or not. It is to the children of Ashbury Park. I want to make a brief history on it. We are agents of the state of New Jersey, designated to, to look after, well-being the children of Ashbury Park. And you know who taught me that? This woman right here, who sits right next to me, Ms. Lizensky. When every single time that we were going to vote no on a tax increase, you would dominate. Okay? Ms. Lizensky would tell us, "That's not your job. Your job is, you are agents of the state, and you are here solely, and now, to protect the school district, the children of Ashbury Park." And it sucks, because we're not, but we are not city council for schools. That's not our job. City council is something different, it's a different animal. But I just wanted to remind people about that, because, um, I just looked through all my old notes, and I saw that, so thank you for that, Ms. Lizensky. I don't remember that. All I remember is, you know, I'm supposed to vote a bunch, right? So I, we, we are agents of the state of New Jersey, all of these things, health issues. And if you're going to, if you're going to shop for rooftops, improve learning now, explain to me how to improve learning now by cutting more resources for kids that if you're something said, that they can't read when they graduate, or all these other things. I want to know how is that, how does cutting more staff and resources improve learning? But I just wanted to.
I didn't have a personal statement that, I was just.
I was just going to say that. I didn't say what I, what I thought about cutting. Everybody's told me what I was saying, so, that's all it is.
Good to be out. Yeah, so here's what I was hoping for, but, uh, for a lot of speeches in three months. Go back to, again, the charter schools, okay? 3 million more for the charter schools, the park in the bed, it's telling us we have to do it. I think we want to see that in writing. We want to pursue that as best we can. You look at the motion, but let's look at, for selling the maintenance building. Is it true about building a poll barn? Have we looked at the alternatives in the high school? Have we looked at the alternative at, around the lawn? That's 500,000 right there. I'm not talking about cutting a special ed program. I'm talking about, that's what it's like to engage your conversation, or alluded to it, data-driven analysis as to how we can become more efficient and more effective and keep the community behind us in doing so. It's those kinds of things. So, yeah, we wanted, wanted, one example, there is, there is one. Get into all the time issues. There would be enough. There are issues that can be analyzed and looked at, yet in the past. What kind of, how much room do we have? And where can we put people? And could we strengthen the number of areas that were maintained, that were heated, that, that, that we have people overstate, without addressing or eliminating any progress? That's called fiscal responsibility. I was hoping we could do that, since I've heard a lot of speeches.
My name is Scott, April 3rd. I sent an email to all the board members on the alternative to the poll barn. I have sent an email on April 3rd to all the board members on the alternative of not having a poll barn. I don't know if you did it. I should say, if you didn't send it, or we didn't get it, April 3rd, I have it right here sent.
I didn't go through, right, so I only wrote documents.
Where do my email go?
I never saw it.
I was looking at both the alternatives of the poll barns, then after that email, save 500,000 dollars right now.
It turned out the alternative is not a viable alternative.
All of those, uh, anyone else?
Okay, so go, you go to the poll barn. Talk about using tennis courts in high school. No, that's not going to work, because we already have an issue with settling, trading those lines. We can put it into foundation, but what's going to happen? The foundations have been cracked, we have, we're going to have to repair it. The basement of high school cannot house a truck, tractor, containers. They can house a box, that's about it. So the alternative is not going to work. So I was going to talk about some things, and, but poll barns. I worked closely with the City of Ashbury Park, we already met, uh, the, what was it? Our works supervisor, they can now look at the area that we want to put a poll barn. They will look to help us with putting up a poll barn with money and doing the work to get it framed. So we are not looking to supply funds for the poll barn ourselves. And they would rent out space in that area, which will also create a cost of, of, happening to poll barn. So we did look at alternatives, uh, but we're not sitting here. So there are other, I might as well come with my superintendent's report. Okay, so let's start with the beginning, I thought of a line, apparently free buildings are going to be against the LA test move. Right, so we'll start with science, and we're moving to TLA and math. And we'll get to the NDSLA in math, and we'll transition to TLA, and then, and then with science. Red, 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 we're going to TLA.
Great, great science.
On science as well, can we move into TLA and math? And you'll have, which should be done by next week. And our tanks during these times have been really, really good. Students, for the first time ever, brought with to the staff, students for the first time at Red, LK High School are actually talking about the test, and hearing about the test. That is never happened, if you're in 25 degrees, you're going to cut the, the, everything, everything. And the number of free day, students have grown from 228 to now 260. We are 20 students away from our max capacity. And students are beginning to arrive each week. We have developed, developed planning for the next two years, each of our master studies are nearing completion, so we should have that ready for standing for the goal. The New Jersey Department, Asian Early Childhood Department, has completed seven records at Third National Record. They have been complimented and complimented. The Ashbury Park Early Childhood Department would be 130, and would let them use us as a model school. The high level, that was a bigger experience, a whole, a spanking Jersey, who are helping us to learn. Graduating, certainly. They have the inspiration, surprise, the development plan, which says that we want our students to be able to continue to grow our district and uproot the record. We have that aim tomorrow, but we're getting it next year in surprise. As 2010s habits from India, it's still very good. Nice to wait now to bring it, so it's very simple. High school right now is in preparation, is every simple 5%. MLK 90.5%, Bradley 90%, and H and S, K and S, 97%. We are seeing a strong trend of students returning back from the charter schools. They're coming back to us, okay? And they're really working in high school. Any student that, that we are losing, the non-transferred out of school districts in the state, they're leaving, they're paying, so we're paying, and that's why they have to leave. No difference. Our year, I think it'll be successful, we are extending this by length, so from 30 marks with the Bradley Elementary School, 325 school, and go from the middle school into the high school and elementary. This allows us to sell our own schools, it's not selling out a district, but be a cost, but be a cost savings, but also allows us to lift tuition student for public districts in. We are working with the city of Ashbury Park, the plan on the revenue of 100,000, that would be used by the district and the city for trucks and equipment. I just completed an offer around March with the city public superintendent. The city is looking to help fund this endeavor. We are working on keeping the district sustainable for many years to come. We're looking to reconfigure our buildings, the house of all our students, in order to accommodate our 3K, which is growing, our kindergarten, which is large. We're looking to move the elementary, the elementary marshall to Bradley Elementary School, which is more suited to house the number of students we will have next year. Bradley Elementary grades, we'll be moved to the marshall and contain grades 3 through 5, with the 6th grade moving to MLK next year. So, they've gone for seven grade graders that are doing this with models to utilize more space efficiently and still keep our grade levels together, which helps provide a better learning environment and is more approachable and sound. With the move of the elementary school, you want to talk about what cuts we're making? There you go. With the move of the 2 elementary schools, this will help with rejected cost savings of $500,000 in transportation fees. Thank you.
Okay, we're off the stuff, but I'd like to take a moment, uh, being president, giving me this time, uh, to express my views. I don't personally always try to tell everyone, but I'm thinking, also I do my research, certain things, even doing the grease of property tax. I, you know, done my research. I put a letter together that does not perfectly meet the forward to the budget of 60. Ashbury Park School District is a state appointed to monitor for some years. During that period, critics challenge that the fate of our schools of spending, financial dismantlement, that educational absence, and check not being, meaningfully addressed by private administrations, or state ownership. Until 2018, the state financed 90% of its funding budget. However, with the implementation of school funding, with that student, the state has steadily reduced the funding, less than 36 million of the budget. Down in application, state funding, one of the identified, treats Ashbury as wealthy cities within the stage of the country, with funding for public education to properly tax studies. After chart map, there is expected to be further additional, almost 11 million in just one year to allow the state mandate thorough integration of education for our schools. If knowledge will be serious, and if there is office of the management, the benefits taken, unknocked of what needed, decisive action by private administration, the board of state ownership, brought us to this unreceivable moment. Under the leadership of our acting student, Danny Martin, I feel this board is very delicate, the right side, led me to top every administration, which is unnecessary spending, capex itself, non-school property, permanently leases unnecessary property for private classes, school needs, particularly often special education populations. We are focused on engaging students and bringing back, joining sites for commitment to learning and testing, developing a five-year plan, which we need to do to sustain this district financially sufficiently. Nevertheless, the state funding one, in great financial strength, in a critical key, such as, three, we can bring here three charter schools that are obligated to fully fund for the key mission here, which by proper oversight, which almost half charter schools over in Manford, is a subject of several investigations, even if we set our public schools back, programs. Safe, all census-based improvement, which continues to assume the accurate, higher level in the city, we can transit to a local capacity to fund our schools. Raising aggregate income to residence, whether they are registered, the problem with increasing this funding obligation under the school funding protocol. Redeveloped zones with a drive of almost 20% of high-income properties, like pilots do not contribute taxes for reference to the school. The higher percentage of special needs students was caused by significantly higher than non, non-special ed students, off our average of 100. Annual property reassessment could have reflected gentrification, city privilege with all persons, all property. The reality is that Ashbury Park, under laws, has missed balance, we count, and in my research , we heard this part. Yet, the rapid Renaissance gentrification, residential placement, face tax, uh, face tax sites, this is saying to you on this, historically a point of the state prepared, both taxpayers did not need their pay travel. And this is the students who suffer the most of the state funding. I hope we all believe our children, regardless of their families, go, are entitled to quality education, strive to be their responsibility. Dramatic suggestion must be dismissed. Spending at Ashbury Park spending other districts, sedates you to accept it, and should our schools agree, try not to tax it. Additional costs of transportation and special education service, increased total costs, along with Ashbury Park residents. Sellers who built this did not directly reduce taxes, had built funds, totally returned to school development. We have my concern that we must ensure rest practices in our classes, even in district, appropriate size of the city of the territories, school population. In my opinion, this board, if it weren't for the administration to change the culture and climate, ensuring that all is being perceived, legally required at the federal level, our schools do not have the same resources and wealth and vision, we're committed to delivering better outcomes for our students. My opinion, no one really wants to raise taxes, speaking of families, we can't say enough, like, on residents, decided to, versus the movement, or citizens to the burden of living, the burdens of the president's, who have tradition, state, elected officials, our local officials, mission of education, the county superintendent, and legal partners. Ashbury Park is a real school, our job is to store quality education for our students, with the cards we did hand, and it's a job we have been lucky to do, and we will not be enough generation after our children. So, I'd like this to be added to the record. And there's also a chart of the, we have 52 districts, uh, you put spotlight on each of them, but out of that, we're number eight, the local side. And so, when we make these decisions, I have to make the party, and I want to thank everyone here, you know, each of the things that we have to do for our person. Our acting superintendent, Art Vino, has come in and really taken charge and led the first nature to make sure each children are given education in third. The staff has been unbelievably supportive of all the boards or any members that reach out there. I'd like to thank my vice president. Both of these people in that finance committee, I have, because they work, they spend hours going over and I heard reading reports and everything else. We have looked at, as Mr. Dominic talked about, overtime, well, we did have an extensive overtime for one of our buildings that got flooded, that we had to repair to get our kids back into these classes over the summer, that we could not objectify, walk away from. And that's that, those who are still, they all suffered, getting this building ready, to make sure each kids were ready to go. And I wouldn't admit that, if we talked about that before. So, if anyone is talking about, they did not get data, I've heard of so much data, I don't even know a report about this in this, but I love it. But I have heard, and the people have supported this, this district funded forward, so I'm going to congratulate all of them for what they have done, especially my vice president. So, what we're going to do is have a vote on this budget and put this reps, and whatever comes out, like I said, I come from nowhere, I talk to anyone, and I will talk to anyone anytime, but if anybody goes with me, I don't deal with nonsense. I don't deal with, 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 with New Jersey, other, we need facts. And I'm a fact checker person, and I'm up at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, reading, looking at other districts and states, I want a meeting call, I've heard hearts of what we have to do. So, like I said, I think we, if we come to this, we, we need to have this vote, and where it comes out, where it comes out, but, you know, thank you for everyone coming out, and I appreciate it.
As my attorney, just before, one of these, uh, second register. Yeah. So, that's the board, the board secretary is going to be giving each of the items aloud, or it doesn't get more by one, uh, and each resolution related to budget is going to be written out loud and voted on here and from.
Over to page C1, number four. It says, on the relevant document, the tax incentive being over in the New Jersey Department of Education. The document has filed with modification to the tentative budget approved by the Executive Council of County Superior. Whereas Ashbury Park Department of Education adopted a tentative budget on March 26, 2025, and submitted to the Executive Council of County Superior in school program. Whereas the tentative budget was approved by the Executive Council of County Superior in school, 2029, 2025. Whereas the tentative budget would have applied for the legal section of the new poster on May 1st, 2025. Whereas the proposed fiscal year 2026, 8 budget, certain districts had the opportunity to apply to the provision of education to increase expenditures, including an application of the tax levy incentive, in order to satisfy the thoroughness and efficiency standards established pursuant to NJSA 18A, colon, 7, F, 26. Whereas Ashbury Park Board of Education is the low, low pay share and spending, although advocacy to be eligible to participate in this program. Whereas Ashbury Park Board of Education is now able to increase expenditures by 1,681,717, and qualify for tax levies incentive in the amount of $556,722. Whereas the Ashbury Park Board of Education has been granted groupable to increase expenditures based on the law of reason. Whereas upon the budget, including an increase in accordance with the tax levy incentive, was prepared to, was presented to the public or the public period health in the Bradley Elementary School, Ashbury Park, Thursday on May 7, 2025. Whereas the Board of Education has now determined to make modifications to the tentative budget as opposed. The revenue budget line at 101210, which the description is tax levy, the tentative budget was 28,469,287. The final budget would propose a $38,184,664, with a change of $9,716,377. Revenue line at 103190, others to 8, the tentative budget at 0, the final budget, 485,769, the change is 485,769, and that is for the tax incentive. The revenue budget line at 101930, which was the sale of property, the tentative budget at 10,925,110, the final budget, 723,964, which equals with a change of negative 10,201,146, and this is the property deduction, that's $70,000. Now, may I repeat as well, that the situation will be above, the Ashbury Park Board of Education hereby adopts the filing on the budget for school year 2020, 2026. We're withholding the budget of 60, to general cost, 63,730,380, for the tax levy of 38,184,664, or special revenue of 14,740,74. The total base budget, 78,242,54.
Question?
Second.
Question allowed? Question, who moved it to, I don't get, she sent it. That question. Now, question. If it is just a vote to accept the incentive and don't have to agree with, you have a sale of property at 763,000, and?
Changes. That makes my, we have two separate motions. First motion, you have to vote the entire motion, it's not, except the taxes that made for the tax levy, disturbing the 21,466,4. Then the next motion, final one, it's not, you changed them, of hearing, with the whole list of items, includes increasing revenue for sale of property from 723,964, back to 21,325.
Okay, so this, this motion is to say, would be accepted and sent.
Now, this motion, there, there are increasing taxes, but the motion says there are increasing taxes, 38,184,664, there's something programmed for $85,000, and we're using the sale of property by 10,21, that's good.
And? Pro.
Is that good? No. Is part? Yes. Mr. Brolo?
Absolutely.
Esteban?
No.
Esteban? No. Dr. Penn?
Yes.
Chris?
I'm going to make a copy. I'm going to give people a case, well, yes, this budget, that's, that's right out, that's very, 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 very.
Is last one?
Yes.
Sir Roger?
Yes.
Thank you. That'd be a motion for C3, number five.
Second.
Second.
Is that good? So this is the role on the all the additional stages? Yeah, thank you. Bart?
Yes.
Yes.
This is number five, sir?
Yes.
C three five.
Did you say my name? Mr. LaRaca? Mr. Tenski? No. Uh, Fennep?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I don't understand what you're asking.
Is Lottman?
Yes.
Is Roger?
Yes.
Oh, I could want to make a note, I want to know, not to tell someone, afraid about the election. I'm going to tell people that all the students, and we still say anything about election, but at this point, I'm, I'm.
Uh, uh, towards giving, uh, whether everything passed.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, we had to do that portion first in order to go back to the beginning of the, the board agenda, the certain things on that agenda was based upon a broken patent method.
We're going to, uh, go to executive.
Are we having presentations tonight? Are there any presentations tonight? No, I'm making a second for you. Sorry, I had to call the children and the staff. Yeah, they'll be at the table twenty-second, you'll have to change the whole, okay, so, okay.
So in order to go to executive session, will you need votes to be made?
I'm going to go to executive session.
Uh, and in recent, we'd like to executive session, we need to discuss the content, to receive and to apply and, uh, privilege and information and add to the bottom. I believe that's it. Uh, thank you. The warning, the close session for approximately one hour, and now we're going to take a vote on the motion to go to executive session.
Is that good?
Yes.
Mr. Bluff?
Yeah.
Mr. Brule?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca? Mr. Tenski? Fennep? Ricks? Lottman? Uh. It's okay. No. See? Is that?
Hey, mom!
We're on two levels.
So, like, here.
Everybody's stupid.
Do you?